...complex for the Commissioners Meeting tonight. At this time, I will turn it over to Vice Chair Pope.
Ladies and gentlemen, I invite members of Sampson County Veterans Council to come forward and lead us in our prayer and our pledge of allegiance. If you would, please rise.
... Father God, we want to thank you for allowing us to this time this Christmas. For someone here in the homeless, we want to have Lord, ask him to continue to guide our hearts and our minds as we seek to do resolutions of things that need to be done in this county and things that are done. We ask him to continue to bless us, Lord. And, and Lord, we want to be able to please you by the things, our actions and stuff, by our tongues, by your name. We ask you to continue to give us traveling mercies when we leave this place to return home. His blessings and more, Lord, as I speak. Amen.
Group attention. Present arms. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Order, march.
Thank you so much.
Before we approve the agenda, we've got two, uh, two walk-on items. One walk-on item is the budget amendment for the Sampson Community College capital outlay on building improvements. And then also on our closed session, we're gonna add NCGS 143, 318-11A and 6, uh, it's a personnel matter to close section. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. A second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right. At this time, we're gonna go right into public information. Ms. Garcia, are you, I see you over there hiding. If you will come up and I'm gonna get you to present for our RPO.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Alyssa Garcia, and I am with the Mid-Carolina Regional Council. One of my roles with Mid-Carolina is to manage the RPO, or the Rural Planning Transportation Organization. My goal in speaking with you this evening is to provide a brief overview of the RPO and its functions, as well as how it can be used as a resource for the residents of Sampson County. For who and what do we, who we are and what do we do? We serve Harnett County, Sampson County, Cumberland County, and Blating County. The rural aspects of this is representation with the State of North Carolina Department of Transportation. There are 20 RPOs in the state of North Carolina, and they were created as a function in the year 2000 by state legislature. All RPOs share four key functions, no matter their jurisdiction. Our first function is to coordinate with the Department of Transportation in developing long-range transportation plans, to provide a public forum on transportation planning, to develop projects, roadways, pedestrian ways, trailways, greenways, all aspects of transportation projects to include in the state funding programs, and to provide information and input as a resource and connection with our partners at DOT, with the residents of Sampson County and local governments. This slide is an overview of the transportation planning process. As you can see, it's, it's many steps, and it can take upwards of 20 to 30 years to get one significant project done. And the RPO is a representative for our region throughout almost every step of this process. As I mentioned, Mid-Carolina RPO serves all of Sampson County, all of Blating County, eastern Harnett County, and the eastern portion of Cumberland County. We are housed in the Mid-Carolina Regional Council, which means they are our lead planning agency. That's where my office is as a resource for residents to come visit or to exchange maps, discuss different projects that would, they would like to see in their area. Our purpose is to work with all of our partners in the eastern portion and all of our southeastern North Carolina to develop transportation projects and advocate for our region. We have our day-to-day duties as outlined in the legislature, but our primary, in my experience, our primary purpose is to be that community advocate and a source of information and connection to the resources available in our area. The most important thing that we can do as an RPO is to communicate and to be with our region and advocate for them in the federal and state arena for transportation planning. As the budget, as we all know, is up in the air with the federal side, it becomes even more important as that comes down to the states and then the local governments for transportation planning. It becomes even more competitive, as well as the need to prioritize and make sure that our voice is heard. Within the RPO, we have two committees that we serve as secretary for. The first is the Transportation Corps, or the Technical Coordinating Committee, my apologies. The Technical Coordinating Committee is like the Joint Planning Board. They make recommendations to the governing body, which is the Technical Transportation Advisory Committee. Both are served of members, or comprised of members of the local governments, members of the public, DOT staff, but the difference between the two is that the TAC has a member from the State Board of Transportation and comprised of only elected officials from our region. All are open to the public and all are open, are subject to the open meeting law. Both committees have their unique bylaws. They share a memorandum of understanding and a prospectus, and are responsible for overseeing the program of the RPO each year. While there are what seems like a number of responsibilities for each committee, their primary purpose is shared with the RPO to serve as an advocate for our communities. We're here with a shared purpose to communicate for our region's needs at the state and federal levels, and it to serve as a resource and provide connections for those departments that the local governments may not have direct access to. The TAC, or the Transportation Advisory Committee, is the governing board. They make the final calls on what projects are submitted to DOT to compete for funding. They make the final approval for our long-range transportation plans. They approve our goals and objectives and our financial means for the year, as long as we're operating within budget. They provide a thorough oversight of how the RPO functions and what its goals are for the upcoming year. The next two slides are meant to highlight the overlapping commitments from each committee. The technical tran, or the technical committee serves to advocate for the rural communities, or communities, as well as review the annual work plan, which is the budget of the RPO. They endorse, review, and approve the documents before it's sent to the TAC for final approval, and finally to NCDOT. We review and provide periodic updates to the goals and objectives of the RPO, all of those final determinations that are made through the TAC. We can recommend changes to our bylaws. We can recommend changes to our membership. This is all done at the TCC level. The TAC makes those long-range, or long-term decisions and has that more direct contact with DOT and the Federal Transport, or Federal Highway Administration. They, as I mentioned, act as the approval authority for all of the actions made on behalf of the RPO. They communicate project updates and recommendations to governments while providing a forum for public input. We review, make recommendations, and work on the project work plans, just like the TCC. Both are designed to work together. It is not one approving the other. It's not the TCC making all of the decisions, or the TAC vice versa. They're meant to collaborate and connect with each other on behalf of our region. And primarily, as I've mentioned, the purpose of each is to advocate for our communities in the state and federal transportation community. The RPO has faced somewhat numerous challenges in having active participation across the region, and we are working to rebuild and revitalize our program through trainings, newsletters, and seizing opportunities like speaking with you all. We are here to provide information, connections, and resources to our state and federal partners, as well as to our local governments, and to provide answers to our communities related to their transportation needs. And here is my favorite part of the presentation, is to lead the discussion or to have any questions that you all may have, and to have that conversation regarding what the RPO does and how we can help Sampson County and get their voice more prominently heard at the state level or the federal level. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to address any questions at this time. And I would like to thank you all for your patience this evening.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I would just like to say I would love to see Highway 24 finished.
It's submitted for funding this year. We have that last segment. It's all planned out, and we just, we're competing for that money. And so that's one of the...
So you're not even sure when they would be completed?
Correct. It's more likely to get the funding because it is part of an existing project, and so that makes it all the more competitive. And we did, as a TAC, as Mr. McLamb knows, we have split it into smaller segments to make the price lower, so that we're able to be more competitive and more likely to get that smaller amount of funding while the overall project is still moving forward.
The projected, the projected roadbed is still the same? It hasn't been moved?
No. No, that remains the same. We just split up where one construction project starts and where the flags start on another. And that's all, just the length of the segments.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The, the last part of that is the costly part. That's when we tie in the 40. That's why we brought in, um, Dupont County and kind of broke it down a little bit to make it more attractive in pricing and involve some other people. And I think it, I, I think we're gonna score okay on that one.
I think so. I, I agree. And that's another...
I think, I think there gonna be some surprise people.
I hope so. We're optimistic. And that's another highlight for the RPO as a whole, is we brought together a, the neighboring RPO in Duplin County, and we worked with DOT to try and prioritize this need to get Highway 24 done, and to make sure that it doesn't fall through the cracks when hundreds of projects are submitted each year for, or biannually for their project or for funding.
Everybody's after a, there's a lot of stuff going on, and there's a, the pot's not as big as I wished it was, but everybody's after what they can, and it's all about how it scores. If you present it the right way and it scores well, you'll do good.
Exactly.
And that's what we've tried to do. The ones I've got involved on that thing so far have anyway.
And DOT, they have a quantitative system for scoring all projects, and it's very, very detailed. And so it comes down to, you know, they have rankings from all throughout different means of the project, where it's safety, the interconnectivity, and other means that would benefit the region, not just the local level, and they score it on each. So at the end of next year, we'll be assigning points to prioritize which projects are submitted to the state to get that funding and finalize that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Ms. Cindy Smith, it's your time. Come on down.
Good afternoon. Evening now, yes. My name is Cindy Smith, and I worked with EIPD for 104 years. You knew it as Vote Rehab. In April of 2024, they changed the name to Employment and Independence for People with Disabilities. The reason I'm here, I don't want anything out of your pot. I'm offering free. Everything we have is free to the community. We offer free services to people with disabilities, as well as employers. We are working with people with disabilities, trying to help them get back to work, those that want to work. We're there for training. We help them apply for jobs and help them with their own boarding. We also help employers, employers that are having problems with filling positions. We have a lot of untapped talent out here. I have people that have master degrees. I have people in IT. I have a chaplain that's looking employment. So, you know, most people think of a disability as always a visible physical disability, but we work with invisible disabilities as well. Anything from anxiety to mood disorders, autism, to someone that is a paraplegic that uses a wheelchair. The state provides all the funding if they need uniforms, safety shoes, special classes, training, if they need transportation to and from work. So we will partner with employers if they need accessibility. We have our engineers that'll come in and adapt our vehicle if they have their own driver's license, but need their vehicle adapted. The state will cover that. We will come in to an employer's business if they need some accommodations to lower some sinks for individuals using wheelchairs to be able to wash their hands, to widen doors, whatever it is that they may need. And October is National Employees Disability and Employees Awareness Month. We call it NDEAM. This is the 80th anniversary for National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And what I'm coming to you for is to ask that we do a proclamation for the area of Clinton and ask that for the October of 2025, which marks the 80th anniversary of National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month, we're celebrating value and talent in people with disabilities. Whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and variety contributions of America workers that have disabilities. Whereas the history of National Disability Employment Awareness Month traces all the way back to 1945. In 1988, they took the word "physical" out and changed it to "all people with disabilities", and not just physical disabilities. Whereas in 1962, the word "physical" was removed, and '88, Congress expanded the week to a month and changed the name to National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month. Whereas workplaces welcoming the talent of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and a strong economy. And whereas activities during the month will reinforce the value and talent of people with disabilities, add to our workplaces and community and affirm cities' commitment to an inclusive community that increases access and opportunities to all, including the individuals with disabilities. Now, therefore, the city of Clinton in North Carolina pledges to continue to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individuals with disabilities and work to pursue the goals of opportunity, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disabilities, and do hereby proclaim the month of October of 2025 to be the 80th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. In the city of Clinton, and they will encourage all employers, schools, and other community organizations in Clinton to observe October with appropriate programs and activities, and to advance its important message that people with disabilities add value and talent to our workplaces and communities. So I'm just asking and wanting to educate the community about EIPD and what we have to offer, and that we can educate employers, as well as employees, on what we have to offer, and hope that Clinton gets on board with us.
Thank you.
And again, I thank you for your time.
I have a question. Where is your office located? How will we get...
I'm sorry. We, I am located, I serve Harnett and Sampson County. Okay, am I done? My office, main office is in Dunn, but we do have an office here in Sampson County. 215 Main Street, that would be West Main Street, yes. 215 West Main Street, here in Clinton. And I come down to Clinton a couple of times a month, more if needed. Most of the time, my time is spent in Dunn, in the Harnett County area. But we're trying to build up the, um, community and educate the community about us to get more business and let them know we've always been known as the best kept secret. We don't want to be known as the best kept secret. We're a free state agency that's offering free services to the community and to employers. We will also come in businesses and train all of the employer's employees on working with people with disabilities, working beside people with disabilities, you know, inclusion and diversity. And it's all free of charge. But we do serve all counties, all 100 counties in North Carolina.
The proclamation always refers to Clinton. It needs to refer to Sampson County, because we're the county board of commissioners.
Yes, and, and that could be changed right. It was just printed out as the city of Clinton. I can do that and get it sent to you as early as tomorrow morning.
That was great.
Yes. Any other questions?
I, I just wanted to say that we, we applaud what you all are doing. It's, it's a big deal.
Well, thank you. I've been working with people with disabilities for 25 years, so it's my passion. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We've got along, Mark Turnington, with Public Works Director.
Good afternoon. Come to talk with you, give you a water update of the projects that's going on. The first one is the water treatment plant on Fason Highway. This has been the longest-going project we've got. We are supposed, the contractor is gonna try to start it up Wednesday morning at 8:00, the 8th of October. We'll be sending out notices tomorrow to the citizens in that area that it could be some discolored water, but we will send out on the phone tree tomorrow and let them know. And if, if the startup is successful tomorrow, that plant will be up and going 24/7, and we should be good with that. The Midway Tank Booster Pump, Bonnysfield Booster Pump, and Roseboro Tank, it is substantial completed. We have given the contractor the punch list now. Once he gets the small items on the punch list did, we'll be through with that. And I'll not be bringing that back to you again. I'm considering that finished. Avon Ho project, they've got about 85% of the water line laid. They started filling the pipes up today with the water, going from Ingo to Avon Ho. So hopefully, by the end of this week, we'll have the pipes full of water and ready. Won't be ready to start selling water. We've still got some more work to do as far as hooking up the homes and stuff like that. GFL project, that's the roads around the landfill at Snow Hill. We're gonna put that project out next week for bids. Hopefully, we will get some good bids, and we'll be opening them the 1st of November. Clement Phase Two, the design has been done. We've sent the permits to DEQ for review. They should be sending us something back in a few weeks, and once DEQ's okay with our permits, we will be putting it out for bid. Southern Wells, that has been bitted out. We have awarded that. We, last week, we met with the contractors, and we give them a notice proceed October the 13th for the test wells at the King Road site and the Taylor's Bridge site. Grants, Old Warsaw Road, Mince Highway, we have resubmitted the grants October the 1st. Hopefully, we will get something this time. We're hoping Commissioner Lee has been in contact with the governor's office. I have sent some information to him about these grants. I have talked to our lobbyists. They're supposed to be helping us try to get some money for this. And hopefully, the General Assembly's still in session. We're hoping after they go out of session, maybe we can get some help and get money for these two projects. Last, I'd like to send out a thank you to DOT. It's, in my profession, it's real important to keep good relationships with different municipalities and agencies. We've had a water leak for over a week now around Snow Hill area, and we've looked and looked, and we finally found it today. Unfortunately, it was under 24. So I did not have the manpower or the equipment to do the work, so I called Keith Eason with DOT, and he sent me a crew with a large excavator, several dump trucks. They got asphalt up for me. They dug it out. I found the leak. We fixed the leak within about 30 minutes. He covered it up, and they're gonna pave it back tomorrow. If I'd had no help from DOT, I would have got a contractor. It would have been weeks, and it cost a lot of money to get that fixed. So I do want to send out a thank you to DOT for, for helping us. That's all I've got. Anybody got any questions?
Yes, sir. On the Old Warsaw Road and Mince Highway grants, is there anything the commissioners can do to help with that grant by writing letters to certain individuals?
Uh, yes, probably to Senator Brent Jackson, if you would send letters to him, and he can get it to DEQ, DEQ Secretary, and they can pass it along to the board that is grading these grants. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. All right, now I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Consent agenda is approved. All right. On to action items. Veterinary and Services Contract. Ms. Anna, oh, there you go. I missed you. I'm sorry.
Good evening. How are y'all doing?
Doing just fine.
Um, so I'm here tonight to see if we could get our veterinary services contract approved. We did tweak it. Paul was helping us tweak it a little bit to give it some more doc, more leniency as far as the days. Originally, the last one was Monday, Tuesday, and Wednes, Wednesday. It was set in stone during this time. If he did have to miss one of those days, he would make it up. So now, three days out of the week is what he'll work, and there's no set days. Obviously, if he's on vacation or has doctor's appointments, then he will make up those three days the week prior. It did decrease. We, last year was $5,000 a month. This year's $4,500 a month that they're getting paid, or that Dr. Oglesby's getting paid. And so, yes, I would just like to see it approved. Dr. Oglesby is here tonight. If there are any questions or concerns with anything, he'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any from on board? I'm pretty safe. I, I think we went through the proper procedure, and everything was handled very well, and we appreciate what you're doing in there for us. Really do. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the $4,500. So...
I'll say it. All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right. Now, we're gonna move on to the resolution for the 2025 refunding. Mr. Alyssa, that's on your table.
Good evening. With the board's emphasis on cost reductions, we have been continually looking for ways to reduce expenses. As part of our efforts, we have been in contact with the underwriter that assisted the county with the refunding of USDA debt in 2015 and 2017. The amount of debt we're proposing to refund is $24.88 million, and if the refund is, is successful, the county will save approximately $1.7 million over the next 10 years without extending the payment terms of the original bond. without extending the payment terms of the original bonds. Mr. Andrew Carter and one of his colleagues from DEC Associates are here to answer questions from the board regarding this process.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, how are you doing?
Hello.
The first question is, the first question, is this savings percentage considered a strong benchmark compared to other North Carolina counties?
Great question. And before I get right into the questions, I wanted to jump in and introduce myself a little bit, Andrew Carter from DEC Associates. Uh, I'm very well versed with the county, but y'all may not know who I am at all. And so, uh, a little bit of background here, uh, the firm that I work for, DEC Associates, uh, had, was involved in the bonds that were issued in two thousand five and two thousand seven for the schools. So, uh, we've, we've been involved with you all for, you know, twenty-something years, although we have not appeared before you in quite a good while, as there's not been many new bonds to be had, and we usually only appear when we pop up for savings. So, the last time you may have seen us was in two thousand fifteen or two thousand seventeen, and then ten years before that, when we actually issued the bonds. So, uh, normally with these publicly issued bonds and bonds to the USDA, you have a ten-year call, which means at that ten-year point, you're ripe for a refunding or could be ripe for a refunding without any sort of penalties in any sort of sense, so that's why we're kinda here on a ten-year cycle. Um, the original bonds that were issued in oh-five and oh-six for the schools were done through the USDA, as Ms. Burton told us. So, great at the time, it was the best terms and interest rates that we could get to build those schools. But just like everything else, market changed, times moved on and interest rates dropped. So we were able to do a refunding ten years after. So in two thousand fifteen, we saved you approximately two hundred thousand dollars a year on the savings from the oh-five bonds. And here we are ten years later in two thousand twenty-five to hopefully save about that same amount. So it's, it'll be this, we're essentially refunding a refunding. So we're just continually to drive down the cost from the issue, the bonds that were issued in oh-five, oh-six. So I just wanted to throw that out a little bit, so if you have any questions about who I am or, or what we do, I'm more than happy to do that. But the first question was, are the current savings in a good place to even start? And I would say, yes, they're very strong. We're at about seven percent savings when you look at how the math is calculated on this. Um, for reference, some of your peers and neighbors and such, Chatham County, um, I believe we had another for Henderson County that was just done in, just in the past few weeks. And their savings levels were not as strong as this, they were in the five and low six percent. So we feel this is a very strong place to start. I will caveat all of this for you all and everyone else in the room, is that these numbers are always snapshots in time, right? So, market moves every day, but we continue to keep our eye on this. So I think we're starting from a very strong place, that even if the market turns against us a little bit, um, we would still have very strong savings for the county. So, yes, I would say seven percent is a very strong place to start. And the LGC usually has a floor of about three percent to even get started. So we're well above where the LGC would wanna see us get started.
Thank you, that's what we want, thank you.
How, how, how does this new TSI compare to the rate, uh, that we're paying, uh, on the twenty-fifteen bond? And how much interest of the taxpayers are voting over the funding?
Another great question, and I'll start a little bit by saying that bond math is a little bit different than, say, a bank loan or, like, you know, mortgage, when you're looking at, uh, interest rates. So the interest rate here is lower by about five to seven bips, as we call it. So this is about a three twenty-three right now, it's hovering. Your last bonds were done in an all NTIC of like a three thirty-two. So we're, we're below that, but in bond math, because it's a little bit different, we pay coupons and yields for each, uh, principal that we have. So it's not a, it's not a fixed interest rate throughout the entire time. And so, we're getting savings because our yields are lower than the yields we had when we issued it before. So that's generating the savings here. So, uh, I think you asked, how much is this saving us? Uh, Ms. Burton said that, uh, about one point seven in what we call, uh, PV, you know, present valued cash flow savings, but in actual dollars in and dollars out, it's closer to that two million dollar mark. So it's approximately a little over two hundred thousand dollars a year right now in actual budget savings from what you're currently paying.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. All right. How does the premium affect our cash flow? Um, we're using it as an escrow and cost, but, uh, or does it just reduce principal?
Yeah, so another great question. Um, again, bond math and such is different than when you go out and get a bank loan or your mortgage. Uh, right now, we're in what's called a premium market, which means for every hundred dollars we're asking for investment, they may give us a hundred and one and get a little bit better yield. So that will reduce our par amount that we're issuing. Um, but that premium that's generated, which is essentially money into the project fund, will be used to, uh, basically pay down the bonds themselves. So, um, there's nothing, you'll have to come out of pocket yourself for any of this, and the premium will use to draw, uh, push down what the par amount of your bonds are, which is technically what the principal amount, par equals principal. So we will borrow less principal and generate more money than we need to pay off the old bond holders as we issue our new bonds. So it works in, in, in tandem with us. It's a great time to be going to market with premium for refundings.
Thank you.
Of course.
Why is the escrow yield shown at zero percent?
Another great question. So this is considered a, uh, current refunding. So we're at that ten-year, uh, ten-year mark. If we try to do this last year, we might have to escrow some money for that first-year bond holder that we couldn't pay off, right? Because we were a year early. Now that since it's current, it's just like what you consider your bank loan or your, your mortgage. Everything's current, we're just essentially paying off the old bond holders and getting new investors at lower yields and rates that we will have. So there's nothing sitting in the escrow that has to earn any interest. And so, on the day of closing, the old bonds are paid off and the new bonds are issued, and there's nothing outstanding out there for you. So no need for investment in the escrow fund.
Thank you for answering our questions. One, one final question.
Of course.
Is, uh, I just want to make absolute, absolutely clear that the refunding doesn't shorten or doesn't necessarily extend our debt service schedule. That's the biggest concern, is that we're not extending it out more years.
It, yeah, in other places around this country, in other states, that might be typical to try to get a refunding by extending the terms that you originally had. In this state, that's very much a no-no, and, uh, is not, would not be allowed by the LGC. So it doesn't shorten it, it also doesn't extend it, it keeps the same schedule you currently have. You'll just be enjoying savings in your budget every year until it's paid off.
Thank you.
Of course. The one last thing I'll say is the resolution that you're passing tonight, or hopefully will be passing tonight, uh, essentially just giving staff direction to move forward with the process. There is nothing here tonight that binds you to doing the refunding. If the market moves against us and the numbers aren't good, we just stop and we halt. So there's nothing tonight's action that would force you into anything.
Okay, I'll take a motion to the dot resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the county administration to move forward with this bond refunding.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Alyssa, you need to move forward now, be ready to go. And with that, you've got another, you're presenting again to us, please.
Um, yes. The Sampson County School System is in the process of building a new Hopton High School. They received sixty-two million dollars in need-based funding from the lottery. Um, before you is a, um, needed, um, an application to request a, um, reimbursement for a little bit over two million dollars from the needs-based lottery grant that the schools have already spent, um, at the beginning part of the, the project. Um, so just, um, requesting a motion to approve the submission of the distribution request is presented to the lottery.
All right, I'll entertain a, a motion.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion so carries. Thank you for that. Both were good, good things that we're trying to move forward with. Um, Ms. Dana Hall, you're up, should, on you.
We're gonna be moving some funding on our home and community care block grant. Uh, we turned in a, uh, budget a couple months back when we hadn't received all of our funding from the state. So our family caregiver money this year, instead of twenty-eight thousand dollars, was twenty-one thousand. So we actually shifted, uh, that amount from housing and home improvement to information and care assist, or case assistance to, um, encompass that money. So it's basically just a change in the budget. Um, we're receiving the same amount of money for block grant, but we're just redistributing those funds to cover the salary for Angela Faircloth. And this has already been presented to our advisory board, but does need to be signed by the chairman.
So it needs to be, it needs a motion or approval then?
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion approval on that, please.
I make such a motion just be approved.
So.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion so carries.
Thank you.
I believe that's all the action items we have. Now we're moving on to board information. Have any more information to come forth, are we good?
Just what's in your agenda, yes, sir.
Do what?
Just what's included in the agenda already.
Well, I don't see anything, am I missing something? Help me out there, you know how I am.
Community College?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, I didn't write that down, I, my fault. They'll be shocking me over there. Uh, also, we're gonna move on to an item on the budget for the amendment for the Sampson County Community College Capitol Alley, building improvements, and I'll take a motion to do that. You can look out there if you need any further questions from anyone on the board.
Mr. Chairman, the budget amendment was walked on to the consent agenda, and the, the board information that you have is just some information from the health department, it's meeting minutes and things like that.
Okay, I got you.
It's just, you don't have to take any action on it, it's just there for your information.
Well, we've done the information part, we rolled on. I couldn't find it.
I had to hunt for it, don't worry.
Oh, well, good, I'm glad I'm the only one in. It says, please contact the county, uh, county manager's office. Unless you, they're gonna contact you to have any, any more information. All right. Now can I move forward?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So if we try to keep everything as light as possible, but on, on target. All right, well now we have our public comment period. And at this time, we're gonna bring up Mr. Terry Williams. Oh, you're fine, take your time.
My name is Terry Williams, I'm a, I live in Ingo. I retired from the Navy twenty-eight years, I was one of your first technology directors for this county. I was the first technology director for this county, I was the first technology director for Cumberland County. So I know how the stuff works a little bit. I'm on the Union Advisory Committee, and every time we meet, there was always an issue at Union Elementary School about the congestion and the problem with the traffic. And so, tried everything, called state, called everywhere, could not get any help with putting caution lights. So finally took it upon myself, and as you see here, these people are the ones that I had to call. And Mr. Horine, Mr. Hancock is in, uh, Wilmington. And so he had to come out and say, it can be done. Then two guys from Raleigh had to come out and say, here's where you can put them. Then a guy from Dunn came, and I still hadn't figured what he did. But anyway, I paid for the lights. My fiance died and left me some money, she was a teacher of thirty-one years. And so, uh, they weren't cheap, but we got them in. My issue now is, I need some caution light, I mean, some speed limit signs, forty-five miles an hour school zone placed on those lights, like they have in the Midway District. And I got lights at Union Intermediate School, it's on Edmund Mathers Road, and it's in a curve. And so, I need, uh, signs there too. And I haven't had any, uh, help so far getting that done, and I was hoping Ms. Robinson will be here tonight. She's the president of the Union Advisory Committee, and she's a school bus driver. And, uh, at some point, we're gonna have to look at a stoplight at Union Elementary School, because now the high school buses come out at the same intersection as the buses from the elementary school. And so, the caution lights are there, but there's no speed limit signs. And we need the speed limit sign so law enforcement can enforce the law.
Yep, I agree.
And, uh, say, you're speeding. Uh, and at, if you go out there about ten o'clock during the day, there's hardly any traffic. But if you go at school change time, the lane is full in the middle, and the lane's full on the side, and the bus is trying to come in and out. And it, and then the same thing happens at, when school's out in the afternoon. So I need your help, and there's a, am I timed up?
Yes, you are.
I didn't know you had a time limit.
We have heard everything, I promise you, I know what you're doing.
Well, very quickly, the second thing is, the intersection on Lisbon Ridge Road and four eleven going down to Harrell's. We've had the front end knocked off of a school bus. This past weekend, we had a pickup truck totaled. Uh, the guy that owns the old Clear Run School would like to see a four-way stop sign put there too, because the traffic has to come up the hill from Harrell's, and a school bus is stopped and having to come up the hill to get across the intersection. And so, the traffic's blocked and everything, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Mr. Apostle Munns, you're up, sir.
Good evening. Well, my, uh, my, um, my speech isn't, isn't gonna change, it hasn't, hasn't in the last couple of years. So, uh, just wanted to bring your, you all attention that, um, I did meet with the county manager about seven weeks ago. Had to sit down with him, presenting him with a lot of information. Uh, documentation of which I asked him this evening before the meeting, had he even looked into it. And he shared with me that it's a lot, and I asked him if he was gonna look into it. And, um, you know, that remains to be seen. But, um, in all seriousness, um, you all have a problem with your DSS department. You have a problem with human resources, you have a problem with your director. Um, I'm not going anywhere. So, um, not trying to, as some have labeled me intimidating and all this kind of stuff, but you never got to know me, but I'm very direct. And if something needs to be handled, it needs to be handled. Uh, what's worse, the actual crime or the cover-up? Um, so with that being placed on the table, I have had several families get in contact with me concerning the, the venom that has been spewed from your DSS department. Uh, I have had, uh, people who have been employed by the DSS department, uh, one who had a contract with your DSS department, private contract with your DSS department, have shared with me the venom that has been spewed from the director. Um, the law of Genesis, you all should know this by your administration, the law of Genesis says, every seed produces its own kind. That's the law of Genesis. So if there's an issue, if you have an issue within your body, you know, you have to look at the head. So my, my thing is, um, what I would like to present, I have families who have been affected by your department, who are willing to sit down, let's start some type of dialogue, let's, we need to start somewhere. I won't continue to come to these meetings, but we need to start somewhere. These, these families are willing to come forth, let you know, it's the same people who are doing this stuff from the director on down, the same people, they're willing to come and sit and talk. Believe you're still on the DSS board, if I'm not mistaken, you're the chairman. Let's get some effective dialogue started, let's get a sit-down with these families. People are scared who are employees by the DSS department of being retaliated against, because if they were to speak, they will be retaliated against. This is a major problem, which needs to be addressed. Now, are you gonna address it, are you gonna cover it up? That's the question I pose, and I'm not going anywhere. So I would like for this to start, you have my number, you know how to get in touch with me. Y'all have a blessed evening.
Thank you, appreciate you. Bob Grazek, you're up, sir.
Good evening, my name's Bob Grazek, I live over in Parkersburg, North Carolina, Sampson County, and I'd just like to share something with you. On November eighth, Saturday, between the hours of two and six at Veterans Park, the Veterans Council will be having their annual sale of pork butts, Boston Butt fundraiser. The tickets are fifty dollars each, Ms. Ann has tickets, also there's four American Legion posts, they're selling tickets, and the VFW post is selling tickets. Veterans Day is on November eleventh, so the veterans will be there all day Saturday at Veterans Park. You wanna get there early, is it six AM?
They're cooking them at that point, they start serving at two o'clock to six o'clock.
If you wanna come and assist or be with a veteran, six AM they start getting there, and they cook and they bag up these Boston Butts, they're fifty dollars, Ms. Ann has those tickets. The money actually goes to, to her fund in case a veteran needs money for anything, whether it be for rent, where they can't get money for, from another funding source, or if they just need money for food, or if they need money just for any little expense, they come to Ms. Ann, and she has this fund from some of these Boston Butts. Our, our freedom is not free, so please, if you get the opportunity, and everybody watching, go out and buy a ticket for Boston Butt, buy, buy two, there's many. If you can't come by and see Ms. Ann, find a veteran, thank a veteran, any one of them are selling those tickets. So again, freedom's not free. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Ms. Elaine Hunt?
Good evening. My name is Elaine Hunt, I reside at seventy-one seventy-one O. Warsaw Road, Turkey, two eight three nine three. First, let me thank you all for what you have done, I'm gonna thank you in advance for what you're gonna do, 'cause I just believe soon and very soon, you don't see how important it is that we get water, and you don't rush to help us do a little bit more. If first you don't succeed, we're gonna try, try again. Right, I've been coming to you all three years now, five months, and I don't know, I think Commissioner Crumpley's probably tired seeing me, but I'm gonna keep coming, I, I promise you I will, because half of the residents in my neighborhood water tested with PFOs, and I researched that, and I see what it can do health-wise, it causes liver damage, it causes thyroid disease, it causes cancer, and my father passed in November of two thousand and one. I don't, back then, we didn't know about PFOs, but I just believe in my heart, some of this could have helped contribute to his death, and so I'm gonna keep coming. I know you all, someone asked, what can you do to help, I think he said, letters or get in touch with Senator Jackson. I would appreciate if each one of you would write a letter in support of us getting county water, and I would appreciate you who know Senator Jackson, to impress on him to do a letter, do what he can to help us get county water, because we, we failed or didn't succeed this time, I'm told you have resubmitted, I'm praying this time we will get it. But, and I thank you, Commissioner Lee, for reaching out to the governor's office, and thank you for what you have done, and I hope you don't get tired of me, because I will be back if the Lord's will, thank you.
That's fine. And I hope the Lord continues to be willing, you just keep coming, we're fine.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Glenn Face?
Good evening, Glenn Face in seven one six one O. Warsaw Road. I'm basically here to support my sister, I didn't know she was gonna speak, so hopefully I can be brief. I thank Mr. Turlington, what he's doing, Mr. Crumpley, you asked about writing letters, and like my sister said, it would be great if everybody could write letters, and even Senator Jackson, I mean, he's a good man, and, and the tortoise did win the race, but sometime, he moves a little slow, so maybe we can, we can push him a little. I'm a person that believe in business, you shouldn't make stuff personal, but I find all over where we at, when people get mad with someone, they make it personal, situations make it personal, look at all, what's happening nationally, stuff is happening called people made it personal, so I'm gonna need y'all to make this personal. There's a story about a fireman, a fire captain, that went to respond to a fire in a lower-income area of town, and when he got there, the building wasn't engulfed in a lot of flame, but was burning, but he made an assessment that they couldn't go in. Probably two seconds later, he got a call from his wife that his daughter was visiting someone there, then he made it personal, he used all his resources and his men to go into the building, and there were people in there that initially he didn't think was important, until he found out his daughter was in there, then he made it personal. So my point is, our water, and not just O. Warsaw Road, other areas of our county really need fixing, I've done research in other counties, and I know it's hard, I know your job is hard, but creativity is an amazing thing, we have to do it all the time, you know, I look at my superintendent, he, he's been very creative to make sure we get his Hobton High School done, so I, I'm asking for you, praying for you, just be a little bit more aggressive and make it personal in a good way, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Brenda, I'm sorry I can't read the last name, it's my fault, I'm not gonna butcher it bad, you just come up and tell us who you are. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Atkinson, I live on seventy-two thirty-five O. Warsaw Road. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, I thank Mrs. Elaine Hunt and the supporters for what they have done. You know, water is not a want, but it's a necessity. What an issue you have in front of you. Water. My water was tested by the state, it showed that I had E-FAD. They called and said, do not cook or drink the water, they will provide me with water, they deliver the water and the Spencer. I'm thankful, but I had to put it in my laundry room. Do you know how hard it is to remember, you can't cook with water from your faucet? Okay, two months ago, I participated in another waters research by Ecan, Ecan, report came back that I had a high level of sodium, and she said not to talk to, not to walk, she told me not to walk, eat, or drink with the water. Doctor, they said for me to talk to the doctor about the sodium. I said, we were not cooking or drinking with the water none, because we had been told that we had E-FAD. She said, you also have a high level of sulfur, do you know what sulfur does? It may, it smells like rotten eggs. So when we take a shower, we try not to let the water run long, because it smells like rotten egg in the house. I could go on and on about the problem we're having, but I'm thankful for the water that the state delivers every month, so please, continue to work on our water situation. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all the comments from everyone, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to our county manager for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, just have a few things I'd like to share with you. First of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about the federal government shutdown that occurred as of October first, and some of the departmental impacts, just to make both you as well as the public aware of some of the things we're dealing with currently. First of all, the WIC program, which comes through the Health Department, is provided through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and this program is considered a discretionary program, and therefore receives no new funding during a shutdown. At this time, the federal funds will sustain benefits delivery for up to a couple of weeks to those citizens that receive the WIC program, so I wanted to make everyone aware of that. The other thing is, we do have five positions that are funded through WIC, meaning federally funded in the Health Department, so those positions will be furloughed, and we're, we're just assessing what the options are, to see if there's other positions we have available that, and somehow we may be able to bridge the gap for potentially a short time, obviously we wouldn't be able to do anything long-term or what have you, but we are reviewing that. Also, I do wanna mention related as well, the SNAP program, or basically food assistance for various citizens, is not impacted at this time, and it was stated that the benefit will continue for the month of October. And of course, this is ever-changing, we're receiving new information pretty much daily, so we'll keep everyone posted as we receive other information. As far as the Soil and Water and Farm Service Agency Department, all of the federal workers in the Farm Service Agency building have been furloughed. We have four employees in Soil and Water that remain here, they're not able to use any of the federal equipment, vehicles, things like that, that are funded federally, but they are doing their best to keep things moving as much as possible in their roles, so I wanted to share that with you as well. Moving on, still staying with the, kind of in the vein of personnel, if you will, as you know, we've had many struggles with our Planning and Inspections Department. I've been working closely with Nancy, our HR Director, as well as working through people like Mid-Carolina and so forth. We do believe we are in a pretty good position at the moment, as far as having things as leveled out and secure as much as possible, so just to share with you some of the things that we are doing, Mid-Carolina was actually on-site with us today, they'll be serving as our interim planning and inspections director until we're able to fill that position. We do have that position posted, and we are recruiting for that, and we'll be interviewing for that position, but again, until such point that it's filled, we have Mid-Carolina serving as the interim director, so we can at least have that presence, and they're going to begin with two full days a week, as well as accessibility via phone on a constant We have, it's in terms of the field inspectors for inspections, fortunately, we had a gentleman who was retired from Sampson County, was willing to come back and help us, and we have told him many, many times how thankful we are he's willing to do that, so that's helping us tremendously. Of course, we already have one other gentleman who has been in the process of working towards becoming certified, as far as various, the various levels of certification that's needed, he's working towards that, but he'll be able to work with this gentleman more as far as shadowing him, so that's gonna be helpful. We also have hired a new inspector that will begin on October twentieth, who is experienced, and I forget, I think he's Level Two certifications in all trades, if I'm not mistaken. And then we're also in the process of interviewing another gentleman who is experienced, and we'll see how that works out, but I just really wanna give the assurance that we do have some, some, some good, we've stabilized the, the field inspector positions, if you will, at the moment, so we're, we're doing okay as far as that's concerned, so I wanted to share that with you. Wanted to also communicate with you, I'm gonna move to a different topic now, I attended the new Hobton High School Community Reveal Event, and I appreciated being invited to attend. Of course, there was a lot of excitement surrounding this, this occurred on the twenty-fifth of September, but a lot of excitement surrounding the project. During the presentation, it was discussed that the project is currently about one point one million dollars over budget, however, the general contractor has performed many value management items, as the way it was described, to help trim those numbers down. They have managed to do so by about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars so far, but they still have a deficit of about four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars remaining. So it was stated by the architect, there would be some hard decisions to be made to continue to trim things down, however, they did think it was manageable when you're dealing with these numbers, as they're working towards finalizing the plans and the documents for, for bidding purposes, so that was mentioned. Also, I do wanna communicate with you to let you know that the items not included in the project that are being bid as ad alternates, meaning they'll go ahead and, and find out exactly how much money would it cost if you, if you had the money available to be able to move forward with these additional items. These items that we're talking about, that would be ad, ad alternates, that are not included in the current scope of the project, are a baseball field, a softball field concession, and grandstands, a greenhouse, and animal facilities. One other thing I wanna share with you is related to animal waste spills, we know that we've had a recurring problem with that in the county, and I know this is something that has occurred quite frequently in, over the last few years. We just wanna pull everybody together to the table to see, can we come up with, just to help each other out, have an approach of, you know, kind of a community aspect of bringing all of the stakeholders, local, state officials, the various companies represented with, with the ag industry that's a part of this, we're gonna bring everybody to the table on Monday, October twenty-seventh, and again, this is just so we can all put our heads together and hopefully collaborate to come, you know, to try to work towards some type of solution to, to help. Particularly, we know these are going to occur because of the, just the sheer volume of what's traveling on the road, we know there's gonna be cases where, you know, you just have to be prepared for when it does happen, and we just wanna have a good protocol in place to handle those type of events, so we're gonna work towards that. And then finally, I just wanted to share with you a couple of reminders about the calendar, we have the North Carolina-Southeast Partnership Annual Meeting coming up at the Exposition Center Thursday night, beginning at five forty-five. Sampson Regional's seventy-fifth reception is October tenth at two o'clock, and then of course, this weekend is the Clinton Square Fair, I said this weekend, is that correct? Yes. This weekend, Clinton Square Fair on Saturday, so that's everything I have, thank you.
Thank you. Now, the Commissioners' comments and reports, do we have any?
Yes, I do. As the liaison for Sampson County Schools, I have a report to make for the schools. They have officially begun to comprehend strategic planning process that includes hundreds of voices across Sampson County, from parents and teachers to business leaders, to create a shared five-year roadmap. to create a shared five-year roadmap for improving academic outcomes and strengthening our community partnerships. That's a good thing. Also, as we've been talking about all night long, Hobton High School, it remains on track with design documents underway and construction expected to begin next summer, which is good. This new facility will serve as a state-of-the-art learning hub for generations to come, and we take pride in our Hobton Community School. Thank you.
Governor McKeon? Yes, on behalf of what we have already had concern about when it comes to DSS, we do need to be proactive on how we're going to have federal and state to come in and help with our programs that we do have and how to keep them going. And we know that during this, this time, we need some minds and hearts together because people will be lacking if we don't work on these things. The other thing is the Aging Department, I want to thank them for what they do, and they do have a program to help those, in the golden years. And I went to the meeting, and it's just so interesting how they get together to improve what aging is doing in this county.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take a moment as the Business Community Liaison to share a couple of quick updates from our local business organizations. First, from the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Pat Nobles said that the Chamber is doing very well. They've brought back their junior leadership program for high school students. They have re-energized their ambassadors group to support local businesses and are already planning for the Christmas parade. It's great to see that kind of momentum and engagement. I also heard from Tate Naylor with the Western Sampson Commerce Group, they're continuing to strengthen their organization, they're updating their bylaws, modernizing their image, and preparing for new initiatives in the coming year. Both groups are working hard to promote economic prosperity and civic involvement in the county, and I appreciate their leadership in these vital organizations. Thank you.
Nothing on that?
Nope.
The Vice Chair is quiet. To bring up a few people up to date, we did have a meeting today, and I don't have any notes or anything prepared, so y'all might be in trouble. I'll try to make it brief, though. But we did have a meeting today of our elected officials roundtable. I thought it went very well. You've got a lot of people that are involved in this, and we're going to get more. I think it's an opportunity for us to sit together with people from our municipalities and those that have been elected by you guys, and we kind of hash things out, and we get to talk about a lot of things that's going to involve this county as we move forward. The thing that I guess I said more than anything in that meeting was, I wanted this county to look like we want it to look like. I don't want it to look like somebody else wants it to look like as we move forward. And I think that's going to be a big group coming together across a lot of tables with a lot of great ideas as we move forward to put this county where it needs to be. So do I have anything else from any of my other Commissioners? Y'all good? All right, we're going to move into a closed session tonight. We're going into NCGS 143318, and the one that we walked on on Personnel also.
Head of Courts with Norca, General Statute 143318.11, Section A4. Make a motion we go into closed session to discuss personnel issues.
Make a motion.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carried.
I'll get you. Come here.
In closed session, I'll take a motion to come out of closed session.
Mr. Chairman, motion to come out of closed session?
Second.
Motion I second to come out of closed session, no favor? Motion so carries.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At a second, all in favor? Work done.
Thank you.